Okay, I guess we're good to go.
All right. We're going to push down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Go, go.
Senator Madison, position one.
Larry Brown, position two.
Anthony Gannon, position three.
Becky Campbell, position four.
Tammy Kaufman, position five.
Carl Popoff, mayor, and our city administrator, Jody Fitz, is present. So with that, council, what do you come up with? Would you like to hear a... Yes, ma'am?
So, for the public's benefit, it would be all right to review a little bit of what we're talking about. So there was an email from the executive director, Kim Brick at Orca, in which Mr. Mayor was serving on. And he replied to her email, and that has become relatively public. And we have been asked if we wanted to do anything about that. Our attorney has given us some legal advice of what the options are. I think one of the most important pieces is to remember that a public official can say just about anything they want. It's their First Amendment right. We could do a censor, which basically is an official bad boy. We could, ourselves or the community, could do a recall. I will note, he only has a few months left on his terms. That'd probably be a waste of time. We could do a censor in a public statement. And we can also look at our council options with standards, rules and regulations. And that's one of the things that I would like to start with, is in our policy manual, Section 200, it talks about discrimination. And I'd like the council to look at that and see, what do each of you think, if that applies to this policy? Does anybody need a copy of it? Does he have one under his thing? Share. Share. No, they can share.
Yes, sir. I just ask Councilor Kaufman what section of the...
So 200.4, I believe, is most appropriate. And I'll read it if that's okay with you guys. The City of Gold Beach is committed to a work environment that is free of illegal bias, prejudice and harassment, and where all individuals are treated with respect and dignity. The City of Gold Beach intends to provide a professional atmosphere that promotes equal employment opportunities. Therefore, workplace harassment is prohibited. And then, the section on examples is in 200.4.3. And I believe, Councilor Madison read B. Written, graphic or electronic material that is disparaging or spoils hostility on the basis of race, religion, gender, marital status, familial status, national origin, age, mental or physical disability as defined with Americans Disabilities Act state law, sexual orientation, gender identity, Vietnam-era veterans, status or other military status protected by law and allied projected status under applicable law. This includes sexually explicit or pornographic material, offensive or derogatory emails, including jokes and cartoons. The city specifically prohibits placing any such material on walls displaying it on computer screens, circulate in the workplace, send in emails, fax or accessing it by the Internet.
I see that section, and to me, it implies it deals with employment. Because under 4.1, it lists definition of harassment. It says protected under status under applicable law and... Then it lists things that are applicable to employment. This situation has nothing to do with employment.
The very first page of the policy manual is Page 2. It says, "Policies included in the City of Gold Beach policy manual are applicable to all city employees, volunteers and elected officials unless it is clear that the specific policy only applies to city employees." And I believe that Councilor... Administrator Fritz mentioned to us earlier that the policy manual only excludes us from vacation, sick leave, things like that, because we're not that type of paid employee. I do not see an exclusion. We can double check with our attorney. She's still on the phone. If there's an exclusion for us, do we have to abide by this? Kristi, are you there?
I... The format is different, so I don't know. That was why I didn't realize you guys were wanting her on here. I can't tell if she's on here or not, because the format is different. But that was what I understood from her, that this is how we have... I don't know why I'm keeping... That it just has to do with the pay part of it. Insurance benefits. If it's not specifically related to payment as an employee, then everything else applies. Conduct, like I said, driving vehicles, drug and alcohol, all of that applies to everyone that's a volunteer or a member of a non-employee member of the city commission, like the planning commissioner, all of that. So really, the only parts of the manual that don't apply to you specifically are just the money ones.
Okay.
Pay scale, benefits, things like that. Everything else, your conduct, all of that applies.
So in other words, if I do something in violation of this policy manual, as a citizen, not as a counselor, I can be a violation of this and be... Have some kind of adverse...
No. And the reason why we were even having the discussion is, the email that was generated from Mr. Mayor related to his official capacity on the Board of Orca. That if it was the Elks Club, which we did not appoint him to the Elks Club, then yes, you have the right to say whatever you want on your own time. But when you're acting, when you're acting in your official city capacity, those rules apply to you.
May I continue?
Yes.
So what I'm thinking is, if we apply the first email and the response email, does it violate this part of our policy? And what I'm reading in Kim's... So Kim Brick, the executive director of Orca, sent an email to staff, to the board members. I don't know if she sent it to volunteers as well. Board members would be volunteers. And it's talking about racism and how community actions were started out of the Civil Rights Movement, and that there's still more work to do. And that was responded in a reply all. And I want to know, can you reply all, because I'm a little spiced up.
Uh, probably sure. But it gets me, I'm open.
In his response, directing to Kim, with everybody else in, I see a couple lines in here that may be considered against our policy. Shoving your racism bandwagon may be considered that.
Just when we talk, just project because the iPad's picking it up.
Might be considered that. No dads at home could be against family status. I don't know if the Black Lives Matter people don't matter to Black Lives Matter. I'm not sure if that does or not. And then I have an issue with the sorry dear lady, even though Mr. Mayor explained that that was not meant to be condescending. So, and the other thing about it is, he did offer to resign from the Orca Board with this email. So I think he knew it was a little bit inflammatory when he wrote it. So my question is, from a word procedure, does this violate our policy? Is this an email? Yes. Did it violate gender, religion, marital status, family status, national origin, age, mental or physical disability?
Any of those. Counselor, yes?
Speak loudly, please. I'm sorry, because the iPad is what's picking up your voice.
Okay, I'll talk loud. This is Becky Campbell. I noticed that you were referring to 200.4.1. Is that correct? And the thing that I saw, is that the...
I started with 200.4, and then the example is 204.3B.
Okay.
So is there something in 204.1 we should look at?
No, ma'am. I misunderstood what you were saying. Never mind. I was going to say 938. So what was your question, Councilor Kaufman?
Well, my question is, if we measure the email against our policy, did it violate our policy?
Do you want us to go around and offer our opinion on that?
Might be the easiest way.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I'll be first to express my opinion.
Anyone else? No. No, I agree.
No, you guys intend, I say no as well.
Senator Madison?
I understand your intent, but I will articulate here. Harassment is verbal or physical behavior or conduct that is perceived by the receiver as unwelcome, derogatory, or that shows hostility towards an individual. So, I understand that Kim received this personally. With all due respect, you can shove the racism bandwagon. That is unwelcome, derogatory. And I understand that she received it that way. So I do feel like it is applicable, 200.4.1. That wasn't your intent, but I... That's my opinion.
No, you're certainly in front of your opinion. I've always held to that. Senator Campbell, yes, ma'am?
The reason I brought up 200.4.1, which is the definition of harassment, is because it has little to do with the intent of the person who was speaking, but more the perceived intent by the receiver.
Mm-hmm. It's not meant as harassment, but as an idea, I could say something to Councilor Brennan that I think is appropriate, and he can take offense to it. That is so nebulous that it's really hard to hang a hat on. But, you know, what is offensive to somebody? I've already... It's already been shown that Councilor Kaufman was offended by my use of the word dear lady, or the two words dear lady. That was offensive to her. When I wrote that, it was not offensive. That was considered a sign of respect. So therefore, even though I was in there with that thing, there was still that respect involved there. But according to her, man, that's disrespectful. I was offended at it. So let's, you know, to gauge on a person's, what their intention was and how it offended one person or another, I think you're stepping in difficult territory there, given the fact that I have done my level best to explain this entire thing to you. And there was no racism. There was no intention to hurt Kim. My intention at the time was that, quite frankly, I was... I'm just tired of hearing that these people mattered more than other people. And what was going on with it. So anyway, you know, we didn't go on this forever.
I'd like to...
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I'd like to get this done, if you don't mind.
Well, I would too, so let's move it.
So, Councilor Campbell's turn to give us her opinion.
I was looking up the definition of an epitaph.
It's a... Yeah, it's just a name, basically. A word used to describe somebody at that.
I don't think an epitaph... I can't unsee that correctly. Epitaph? Epithaph? Initially, my thought was an epitaph related to race, as you telling the director, she could... I forget the quote. She could shove her racial... What was the quote?
Racism bandwagon.
Racism bandwagon. Might fall under that, but in looking up the definition of an epitaph, it doesn't appear to apply. An epitaph being... Come on, where is it? A phrase expressing a quality characteristic of the person. Epitaph is a term of use. You want to know whether I think the email was racist?
No. I want to know if it violated our policy.
Yes, I think it did. I don't think that was the intent, but I think it did.
And you don't know if Kristi's here, correct?
She is here.
Okay. So I'd like to know, if we decide that it violated our policy, what is our next step? Because I don't know.
Can we hear from you?
We heard from everyone but you. Oh, I thought I already did. Yeah, I believe in those items that I mentioned.
They do, Kristi.
Violated the policy.
I have questions, girl.
Okay. Ask her again.
So my question is, three of us, at this point, believe that it's possible that the Section 200.4 of our policy manual was violated, and I don't know where to turn for what we do if we agree with that. What are our options there? Are they different than what we talked about in your Google memo?
No, they're exactly what I need to...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
The goals are wrong, and it's not a problem. It's not confidential. I think we won't be able to watch the management live.
Would that be helpful, you think? To go over them again? No.
Maybe for the audience, but not for us. We've been going over them for the last two hours.
One of the things I would like to suggest, and since Kristi's still here, because she might want to be cut loose here shortly, is can we release Kristi's memo, Ms. Brick's email, and Mr. Mayor's email to the public, so they have all the documents that we had?
It's already out of the public.
Ask about the...
Actually, Ms. Brick's email is not.
As far as I know, it has, because I'm sure it's been thrown in my face at this time.
Yes.
So my question is, if the council decides, may we release those?
Yes. The council has a twenty client privilege. Can be waived by majority of the council.
Okay.
What was the answer?
The council by majority can waive a twenty client privilege if the council decides they want to release the memo.
Okay.
Did everybody hear that?
So I think for transparency, I would make a motion...
I'm going to get an external mic.
That we release the memo from Kristi Monson on June 16th, local level, government authority, to the public, the email from Mr. Mayor, which we have a copy of, and the email from Ms. Brick, which we don't have the best copy of, but we should have copied that to the public.
Is there a second? Second, it's been made by Councilor Madison. Discussion? Yes, sir.
What's the purpose of the release?
Right now, people were going off of guesses. What did he say? What was he responding to? When I read his email without knowing what he was responding to, it meant something different to me. So I think that more information might be better in trying to diffuse the situation. The five of us are not in agreement. We're not going to have a kumbaya moment. So it's going to be, the more information to the community, the better. Maybe we can diffuse some of the pain.
Motion been made, and that's been seconded, and I encourage a discussion.
Question?
Who's starting?
I.
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 Motion passed, your now is mine.
I don't want to dominate the meeting, but I did prepare something in case we came up to a position like this. Would you mind if I read it?
Go ahead.
So I have a friend that posted something on Facebook last week, and I asked her last night if I could use her name, and she said I prefer a not. And so it's a... The gal that grew up here, she's around 40 now, late, early 40s, she had two adopted African-American children. And so she sees this in a different light than we do. And so I'm going to quote three paragraphs out of her very own thing that I thought meant a lot, and that means a lot in this instance. So this is her speaking, so let me say hi. It's her. Now, white friends, I offer you this. Many of you are presently disliking the situation. You are wanting it to stop. You want it to go back to how it was. You don't like being objectified as white. You don't like being othered. Good. Experience your feelings and recognize them. Only from this place can you begin to understand how people who have been othered by your either purposeful and biased studies of them, or your generalizations and stereotypes, can feel. Now is the time to realize that every person crying out is actually in pain. Nobody is paying them to be upset about the loss of a child. Nobody is manipulating them to say they are scared for their future or their child. Nobody is giving them lies to spew. They are all speaking from an authentic place of lived experience. And many of their white allies, like myself, see the oppression. Hear their pleas. See the sadness in their eyes and want to amplify, not take from their voices. I am a voice speaking truth. I am not speaking out for myself. I am not speaking out in defense of evil. I'm speaking out for people who have been hurt. I pray your eyes will be opened and your heart turned, so you can join me in this effort, because I too also love you. And I don't know why her words got me so hard last week, and then this week it just nailed me with this all coming out. And this is my words now, no, I'm quoting, but today, I think I have to stand up for people that have been treated differently because they have dark skin, because they may have an accent, because they may be different. With my privilege granted to me by my white skin, growing up in a town that's respected because my family, I had to lay up. Not that I didn't have any struggles, just that my struggles were not related to where I was born or the color of my skin. It is my duty as a leader to help build our community, to be part, not be part of tearing it down. As a Christian, it is my duty to walk with the love Jesus taught, and not the hatred and the division. For these reasons, I abhor this email that Mayor Popoff wrote. I wish he had chosen another path. He has shared with us tonight that that was not his intent, that he's sorry that it went out, what he still stands by most of what he said. I can't stand here and allow this venom to be spread if I have leader of this great city. We can't stop it, but I can request that the council stop all travel funds paid for by the city from today to the end of Mayor Popoff's term. And I'll make a motion to that effect, that we no longer pay for any more travel for the city on behalf of the mayor for city business.
Motion has been made, and it's been seconded.
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion been made, and it's been seconded. Councilor Madison, discussion.
Okay. I think that if Mr. Mayor had said that he wasn't sorry, that he wishes that he could... In other words, the mayor has apologized for the email. He has apologized, not for the content of the email, but for the tone of the email. He has stated that... Gosh, I wrote it down. That if he could take the email back, he would. He wouldn't change the content, but he would change the delivery. And that the singular email is not indicative of how he manages the city as a whole, or has he... How he has managed the city as a whole. I think that had the mayor, during our executive session, not apologized, I think that censor might be appropriate, would be appropriate. But I'm not so sure that with a public apology, that we might be overstepping by sanctioning his ability to travel. And by travel, may I ask, Mr. Mayor, what committees are you on besides Orca?
Well, no longer on Orca, but I'm also still on the Roadhog, still on the bike or the trail that they're building around here. Still on that one. And still... Oh, Lord. I'm trying to think right now. There are at least two more, I think, three plus I do have, the Oregon Mayor's Association, and then, of course, LC. So, those I do have. So that, in essence, is far as, off the top of my head right now, that's what I can remember, counsel.
And may I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
How many of those five other boards that you serve on, do they meet monthly? Do they meet quarterly? How much travel are we talking about in the next month?
Roadhog is sort of, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's three times a year. That's all it is. When we were able to get together and have the Trails Committee and what have you, Oregon Trail, that one was more often, usually, often every other month. So there were not that many. The other things that... You know, but then again, there are certain things, you know, that do come up that I may not be aware of. You know, in other words, they don't have a planned program to them, but something comes up that would need my attention someplace else. So right now, there's not that much.
So, were we to continue down this line, we would then have somebody else go to the meetings that you would have gone to to represent the City of Gold Beach? Is that correct? Is that what we're talking about?
You could. You could do that. You could, you could do that. Or I could go, according to the way this is going, I'd have to go on my own, and with my own money. But, you know, so none of this, what has been said, has anything to do with what I'm on. What it is, what the counselor is suggesting, what Counselor Madison has seconded, is that the funding for that is not. So that's, that's where we're at.
See, and I understood that differently. I understood that we would be removing-
May I clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
My motion is to just not pay for it. If he wants to serve the city, represent the city somewhere else, we're not gonna put tax dollars in for him to say things like that.
Okay.
So he can go, we can't stop his speech as a First Amendment right, but as a sanction for breaking our harassment policy, we're just not gonna pay for his travel anymore.
Gotcha.
Discussion begun.
Would you consider amending if a public apology was, was put out, public apology stated from the mayor?
He's not sorry. He's sorry that he said it, but he believes what he wrote.
And quite frankly, some of any others. And I was just told here recently that, no, I won't get into that, I'll do it privately, but one of your concerns is unfounded. So at any rate, as long as I can, you know, counselor, well, I will say again, yes, I will not take back the feelings that I have towards the Black Matter, the Black Lives Matter of organization, because I know what they do. And it has nothing to do, nothing to do with Black Lives, has everything to do with anarchy and whatever they're doing right now. And I am not, I will not, I will not quiet.
We have a motion on the floor, I will not be quiet. You are interrupting a motion.
Counselor, hold it, or you're gonna be asked to be relieved, to leave. So that is where we're at. If this is the way you wanna go, so be it. Is there any other discussion? Question?
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor, I mean, just, Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Motion passes through to two.
Anything else, anybody else want to do?
Yeah, is there anything else anyone else wants to discuss?
Certainly.
Is there anything else that anyone wants to discuss?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that the council or city administrator prepares a public statement of apology, and stating that what took place is not policy of the city, and that the mayor apologizes. I think we need to say something to the public to address the situation.
Can I clarify the motion?
Yes, please.
Does the council want to make a statement, or, 'cause I'm sorry, I don't feel comfortable writing an apology for Mr. Mayor. If the council wants to make a statement, I will, I will assist if you want, but my preference is, if you guys wanna make a statement, then you can make a statement, but I'm not making a statement for Mr. Mayor. If he needs to apologize, then he needs to write it himself.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So does the council want to make a statement? A joint statement or individual statements?
Yes, sir.
I would like the council to make their joint statement on behalf of us, not the mayor, but on behalf of the council itself.
Okay, so is that clarifying the motion? Well, you guys, you made the motion, you seconded, so do you wanna, Counselor Brennan said that he wanted to prepare a public statement, that this is not the policy of the city, but then he mentioned an apology by the mayor, so does the council want to prepare a statement for themselves?
That was, I think, yes, I think we should address the situation publicly.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Okay. So prepare a public statement from the city council regarding this matter?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, okay.
Is the motion been made?
Yes.
And you've got it all down right now?
Yes.
Is there a second?
It was Counselor Pagano seconded it.
Discussion.
How are we gonna write this? We just gonna stay tonight and write it together? We're gonna have somebody edit it? Or is that another motion?
Let's see if it passes. You wanna see if it passes?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go in reverse this time. Counselor Brennan?
Aye. Question?
Aye.
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 Okay.
You down, I guess that makes it easier?
Okay, five, five and zero, ayes.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I think that it's important that we get a statement from the council out quickly, as opposed to, you know, letting this just hang out there without a response from us. But I don't know how much brand power we have left after this evening. What do you guys think? Do you wanna stay and write our statement out tonight, so that we can release it? Or would you like to meet tomorrow and do it? What's your pleasure?
You don't have a paper going out for a while. I'm assuming that you'd want it to go into the paper.
There's a paper going out tomorrow, and the floor is online.
Would they be able to get it in time, the paper to disseminate it?
They put their articles out on, on the internet and social media right away.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor?
I wanna take some time and draft this, so that it's thorough and logical. I don't want to try and push through something quick and just to get something out there. I'd rather us take a couple days, maybe a day, something, come up with something, bounce ideas off each other, and come up with a good apology-type thing, good statement, not something that we just lame and throw together.
How much of the draft do we have?
One short paragraph. I'm okay with giving it a couple days, and coming up with something. I mean, I would prefer to do it quickly, but if-
Can we approve it by email, or is that having a meeting outside of a meeting?
Oh, that's a good point.
So do we need to continue this meeting to another date to finalize it, or can we email it back and forth and make edits?
Kristy, the question is, can they work on this together, and does it, do they need to have another meeting, or can they just agree that that's, that they wanna issue an apology and work on it?
So there are a couple ways to do this. Good question. Generally-
Sorry.
-what I recommend. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's, I need to get a better sound system for this.
So generally, the way I recommend is, if the council wants to put out a statement by the entire council, you talk about what it should say. Generally, you want it to say one, two, three points, and then you delegate to a member of the council the authority to draft it and issue it, so that would avoid you having to have them repeating, pulling it over. And if you trust that member of the council, that works well, as, you know, if you have mutual trust. You could also have that member of the council to work with the city administrator to draft it, so that you have two eyes on the document. I don't know if that'll work for your situation, but it works for a lot of different councils.
Were you able to do that?
Yeah.
So did she say we just sketch out the topics, and then each of us write a topic? Is that what she said?
No, she was saying that you have, like, the points, the large 50,000 thing that you want addressed, and then delegate the actual writing of it to one person.
I delegate it to Kristy Monson?
No. Can two of us work on it?
I can certainly help. I can certainly help.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I was just gonna ask if Counselor Campbell would be willing to, to come up with a draft, and then how do we, did I understand that she, if someone comes up with a draft, then we can, we can, we sent that draft and not violate any meeting?
My understanding was 50,000, you guys say tonight, I want it to say this, this and this, like, the high points, and then you delegate the writing of it, and they release it.
Would you be willing to do that?
Yes, sir.
And the second question, Kristy, is can two counselors work on it?
Yeah, as long as it's not a forum.
Yes, you could, you could delegate whoever you'd like.
So if you wanna have more than one of you?
Yep.
Becky and Summer?
I would be happy to work with Summer on it, if she wants to assist. I'll work with any of you guys, whatever, whatever you want.
Okay, all right.
So what overreaching topics do you want included in the public apology that Summer and I, that Counselor Madison and I are gonna write on your back?
Is it a public apology or a statement?
Prepare a public statement from the city council regarding this matter.
Okay. What would you like the public statement to say?
Just like three bullet points.
Yeah, there's, okay, so.
So in your, in your draft that you started, that you emailed us earlier, that you thought would go for this meeting?
Yes.
It was misunderstood. You quoted, "The city of Gold Beach prohibits discrimination," and I think you could quote that straight out of our policy manual. And I will find the page you gave it to, how's that?
That's awesome. And what Counselor Kaufman is referring to, as I did a press release for today, in case any-
There's a draft.
A draft, in case any press wanted comment prior to a meeting, that we would have something that we can all speak to. So we want to include a discrimination statement, what else?
Do we wanna say something about how the council, the mayor's statement did not have anything to do with council, with the city itself, the council itself, with his own opinion and statement type thing?
Okay. So his opinion, the opinions expressed in the email reflect Mayor Popoff's opinions only, and are not indicative of blah, 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 the council's-
All you have to really say is it does not reflect council wishes or opinions or summaries such as that.
Much better it works than these.
It makes it much more succinct, and I think probably easier to understand for most people.
Is everybody okay with that? So the discrimination statement doesn't reflect the council opinion as a whole? Anything else?
Counselor, about that?
Do we want to articulate the motions that were passed this evening in that statement?
I think that would be appropriate. What do you guys think?
I think so.
Yes? Okay. So Counselor Madison and I will get together, write something up, and release it, based on these three bullet points. Is that correct?
Do you wanna add anything additional?
Something about we would like to continue to build community, and would like to see, how do you say, if people work together instead of being frustrated with each other. COVID has really made everybody on edge.
Yep. Work together, okay. So those are four points. I think that's pretty good. What do you guys think?
I think so.
Any longer, people won't read it?
Yeah. Okay, Kristy, we're just gonna run this by you real quick, okay?
Sure. So the four bullet points that we have are the basic discrimination statement that's included in our policy and procedure manual, that the opinions expressed in Mr. Mayor's email are his own opinions and don't reflect the council as a whole. We're gonna include the passage of the censure, and we're gonna talk about building community relations and working together as a, as a community and a whole.
Has no issues with any of those, and I can't seem to look it over if you require any legal work.
I would love that personally. What do you think, Ms. Madison?
That Kristy would be happy to review it before it gets released, and I think that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I make a motion that a formal written letter of apology from the mayor be delivered to ORCA staff, volunteer, and executive director.
I'm sorry, I won't do that. I will make a like-it apology to everyone, but I've already made my apologies, and I'm not gonna be coerced into doing something more than that. I said that I would make a public apology. I will make a public apology about the two things that I spoke about, and I've been adamant on that, and I've not stepped down from that. ORCA can get a copy of that letter. That's what I would do. Let them have a copy of the letter, a letter that is going out to everyone, or whoever it is that we're, we're gonna be sending it out to, but have something specifically to them, no, I won't do it. Go ahead, now, Ms. Brennan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but a motion was made, so is there a second to that motion?
Probably best not to have one.
Okay, so dies without a second, but I just wanted to have the motion and the name should have been acknowledged.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So are we prepared as a council with what we've concluded tonight, and communicate with the community? Do we feel good about what we did tonight?
I do.
Are we ready to leave tonight, and we feel good about what we got done? Or is there something else we should do before we leave?
I'm not saying anything else is good.
My perception may be different than everybody's, but I, I get the feeling that people are very upset, and they're divided. A lot of people are like attaboy mayor, and others are like, he should resign, we should run him out on a rail, and, you know, others are like, we should give him the crown jewels. So that's a lot of divisiveness. I work to build community together. I don't want to divide the community, so.
I think that's why we're making a statement. I think without making a statement, what does that do to the state? We've addressed that.
Thanks, Brennan. And I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir. Second, back to Counselor Brennan. Question?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, counsel. All right, thank you, counsel.